Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, call this meeting back to order. We were in executive session for the purposes of discussion, discussing union and non-union labor negotiation, like student negotiations today. Okay, so to begin, we look to the public to see if there's any public input, and there's no public, so there's no public input. For the student report, Sophia Galupo?
Galupo.
Galupo, class of 2022, will present the student report.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I wanted to start the report with the sports section. Our teams did really well this season, and many made it to the winter tournament. Girls' basketball is playing at seven tonight at Marblehead. Boys' basketball played last Thursday and lost in the second round against Kingsbury. Girls' hockey lost also in the second round on Saturday to Boston Latin. And boys' hockey lost first round to Tewksbury on Tuesday. Cheer, Wong Kowls, last weekend, and will be going to regionals next weekend. And for track, Caitlin Gorgani and Billy Lord competed at New England's this past weekend, and Billy Lord came in first in the 55 hurdles. And he's the first New England champion from North Reading, so that's amazing.
Way to go.
And at all states the weekend before that, Lindsay McClellan beat her own personal record, which is the school record. And at states, North Reading's usually used to winning the meet, but the team was really proud of coming in fourth because there was a lot of personal bests that day. Tomorrow night is sports awards, so all of the teams will be recognized, and spring sports will be starting in two weeks. For academics, because it's in the middle of the term, the biggest thing is course selection for sophomores and freshmen. Sophomores is this week, and it's one of the more important ones because it's a time when sophomores get more freedom in the courses they take. So mainly that's in the availability of AP classes. And then MKS ELA is in three weeks, and the teachers are preparing sophomores, because only sophomores take ELA now. NHS is in the midst of applications for the junior class and some seniors. In music and arts, there's been a lot of success lately. Maskers won the preliminary round at St. John's Prep, and will be moving on to the next round on March 14th, and they're hosting that here, and that has five teams. At last weekend's competition, there was two acting awards given to Gianna Nalivo and Sam Jenta. Allison Rabideau won Best Makeup and Hair. Meg Regan and Eleanor DeKleen won Best Costume and Design. And Rachel Slatenhoffin won for Best Student Director. Notorious made it to the second round of ICHSA, which is the National Acappella Tournament. In clubs and events, the biggest event happening this Friday is the Snowball. So the Winter Ball is a freshman-sophomore semi, and a lot of underclassmen are really excited for it because it'll be our first school dance. And tickets were sold much in advance, so we know that there were 150 tickets sold. Also later this week, Student Council has their annual conference in Hyannis. Last weekend, DECA had their conference in Boston. Interact is having a fundraiser for kids living with leukemia and lymphoma, pennies for patients, and it's a coin competition between the classes, so it gets the whole school involved. And Book Club is working to make a book buddy system with first graders at the bachelor school, and it's going to teach them about world cultures. This Friday is a teacher development day, and at that, Mr. Hain is going to be presenting about student-teacher relationships, and all five of the student representatives are in a video that talks about our views on this topic. Later in March, there's going to be a staff-student tournament for basketball, and that's actually a fundraiser for lacrosse team. On March 18th, there's a presentation here in the DLL for students to learn how to deal with unhealthy relationships and how to know if you're in a safe and healthy relationship, and that is with Ms. Whitney and Mr. Costello through the Youth Action Team, which is a club at our school for relationships and just being good citizens. And then for my student work, I brought in a lab from my AP Environmental Science class, and it's about cookie mining. So it was the opening to our mining unit, and we all got in groups of two and three and got Chips Ahoy cookie, and we used toothpicks to mine out the chocolate chips, like ore. So as we had to move the chips across the board, there'd be smudges and crumbs, and those would later be counted for as tax. And the ore would be positive, obviously tax would be negative, and our totals were put into like a class competition. And then we looked at videos and all different research things to compare our simulation to the real life.
Interesting. Okay, questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions. You had mentioned that there's a book fair kind of thing, the high school to the batch.
Yeah.
Can you explain how it works and how it came to be?
So in the book, the high school book club, they decided that we needed more connections in between high schoolers and elementary schoolers. And at the batch, they also have a book club, and they do a book buddy system with the fourth graders and the second graders. So now, high schoolers that are in our book club are going to be sharing books about world cultures with the first graders at the batch.
Very nice. And so when you did your cookie mining, if the cookie cracked in half, did you get to eat it?
Uh, not quite, but, yeah.
Chris?
Yeah, do a lot of sophomores take AP Environmental Science?
So it's the only AP that sophomores are allowed to take. So in my class, and there's only one class of it, there's 16 sophomores and two seniors.
So you said sophomore year is the first year you get to choose your own classes? Or some electives and some choice? What sorts of things are you able to choose?
So because of, in freshman year and sophomore year, you have more like arranged classes, like gym and for freshmen, like freshman seminar. When, and you have to take foreign language. In going into your junior year, you get to, all of those classes are more optional or out of your schedule, so you have three or even four open blocks. So there are so many different varieties of courses you can take, so it's really just based on what you feel like and interested in.
What sorts of courses are you hoping to get into?
I'm really interested in like AP Bio and AP English, and with AP Bio, there's a lot of other science classes you can take, like anatomy and genetics.
Very good. Was this your first meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, very good job.
Yeah, great job.
Excellent job.
So, thank you very much, and so as tradition, you don't have to stay. Welcome too, but nobody ever does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Why are we so good? We finish up our continued business. Okay, so for new business, we have the first budget presentation today by the Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Connolly. Have a PowerPoint.
I do, yes. So, thank you Chairman Buckley. So I do have a PowerPoint that was included in your packet, and I know everyone by now should have gotten the full copy of the budget book. So I'm going to try to move through the PowerPoint as quickly as I can, there's a lot of information to go through, but I'll try to leave some time for some discussion at the end. So our budget challenges, I feel like I kind of have a broken record every year when we talk a little bit about budget challenges. So the idea is talk about our budget challenges, our budget priorities and main goals for the year, and then kind of get into the actual operating budget, the numbers, touch upon some of our school revenue offsets and budget subsidies towards the end of the presentation, look at some of our operating budget history and what our proposal, how it compares to previous budget years, and then, you know, talk about next steps in the process. So the governor's budget was released, and typically, and this has been historically for North Reading, the state aid that we receive has been relatively flat, as we tend not to see huge increases in both Chapter 70 aid as well as the governor's unrestricted local aid. So that kind of remained true for the governor's budget. I know we have the Student Opportunities Act, and some of you may have been following what's happening with that. That's all great, and it's certainly initiatives that are very good for education across the Commonwealth. Most of that funding is geared to help sort of the gateway communities, communities with maybe a higher population of low-income or economically disadvantaged students. In North Reading, based on just where we stand, tends to default to the minimum amount of aid per pupil, which for us has been about $30 on a per pupil basis, which is, we're looking at about a $69,000 increase on an annual basis. That's what it's been over the last five years. So local revenue, the local receipts the town receives in, as we know, governed by the Proposition Two and a Half, so it's relatively limited on what the town of North Reading can do locally in terms of their revenue. Fixed costs has been historically rising or escalating on an ongoing basis, much higher than our revenue. So our revenue tends to increase by, on average, two and a half to three percent annually when the budget looks to get finalized. And fixed costs, when I say fixed costs, I mean health insurance, retirement costs, benefit costs, you know, general liability insurance costs, workers' compensation costs, those fixed costs that both the town, that it's within the town appropriation, tends to go up by much more than the revenue, generally four and a half, five percent increase on an ongoing basis. So that, this kind of formula certainly presents a structural challenge when trying to fund school budgets. We know that our school revenue, wow, did I go with that? So we know that our school revenue offsets are certainly limited, and those are the grants and revolving accounts that we have on an ongoing basis for the optional programs that we assess a user fee for. You know, certainly full-day kindergarten, preschool, the tuition-based programs for some optional pre-K and full-day kindergarten programs, obviously the athletic and bus program, and extracurricular program we assess user fees for. We also receive both federal and state money through grants and the Special Education Circuit Breaker Program. Those have been somewhat limited, you know, it's certainly limited in terms of what we can receive on an ongoing basis. They have been on a steadily increase, and that's mainly due to Circuit Breaker, the state program, increasing. But we've done a good job, at least over the last four or five years, not increasing user fees, and that continues to be a budget goal. So certainly revenue offsets have been limited. So when you add all this together, I think we start off with kind of a structural challenge when trying to fund both school and municipal-town budgets, and that's sort of what we're operating from as we try to put together our budget proposal. It's not unusual, when you look at the funding sources of a school budget, that local property taxes, from a revenue standpoint, are going to fund over 70% for a community like North Reading. Again, we're not receiving a high amount of state aid, so Chapter 70 and the state aid is relatively limited, as I just mentioned. Local receipts are relatively fixed, and then we have our additional offsets for our fees and our grants that I just went over. So this is a pretty consistent statistical breakdown when you look at this pie chart. And this is, I think this is really pretty accurate when you look at many of the neighborhood and communities in this area. So what are our budget priorities as we get into the budget? We adopted our budget goals, as you know, over the summer. We had our school committee goals workshops and so forth, highlighting five, there was many more. But certainly, it continues to be a priority, both by the school committee and the administration, to maintain appropriate student-teacher ratios in the guidelines of the school committee. So that's certainly a factor when we're developing the FY21 budget. Our strategic plan, so we're attempting to implement year five of what is known as NRPS 2021. So this was put together back in 2016 with the vision of what would the North Reading Public Schools look like in the year 2021. So that's certainly evolved and changed, as you know, over the last five years in terms of what we were able to get done and not get done from a funding perspective, but the vision stays the same, and most of those initiatives, as has been the case for many years in North Reading, guide our new positions, our new initiatives, our new requests in the budget, and that's certainly the case here. We continue to want to support buildings and grounds that needs of all of our schools, provide safe, you know, schools for both students, staff, and the public, so that's a priority. We continue to want to restore school and department operating budgets, and I think that's been the case over the last couple of years and is the same case as we look at FY21. And then, as you know, we collaborate very closely with what is known as the Finance Planning Team in North Reading, and we are very hopeful, as we begin this process, that that will continue to be the case as we move through the next several weeks. So there were five major budget drivers when developing Fiscal 21. Many of these have been the same over the last few years, but as we all know, our contractual salary obligations, so just like any school budget, salaries, given the personnel, represent over 80% of a school department budget. That will be a common trend throughout the state, and that has certainly been the case in North Reading. For FY21, our proposal, the salaries represent 83.6% of the budget. So there's no secret that our contractual salary obligations to meet negotiated cost-of-living adjustments and salary adjustments for our employees and employee unions is a major budget driver, and that's certainly the case here. Enrollment needs, I mentioned the budget priority a couple of slides ago, to maintain appropriate class sizes, student-teacher ratios. Even though we don't have huge changes in enrollment and huge increases, we are seeing a need based on changes in certain cohorts of students moving amongst grade at the elementary level to make, to increase some staff at the elementary level, which we'll see in a moment, to provide mainly in the primary grades, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, to keep those class sizes at an appropriate level across the three schools. So that's a factor here, and is certainly a driver of the budget. Our strategic plan, NRPS 2021, you'll see in a moment, there's, you know, three or four positions that we see as a priority as the administration, that we were highlighting and recommending in this budget to the school committee at this stage. There are many other positions that we would love to be recommending, but we're trying to find a balance, as we always have done, in what are the priorities, what's going to most have the biggest impact on student learning, and keeping an eye on what the community can afford as well. So that's kind of the balance we're trying to find with the positions you'll see in a moment that we are recommending this evening. Our operational costs, so we have, just like the school department, and on the town side, there are fixed costs, there are fixed increases for benefits and health insurance and liability insurances. We have the same for building maintenance contracts. We went out to bid for our wastewater treatment plant this year. Those, there's some cost-of-living adjustments by three or four percent to those operations and maintenance contracts, our HVAC contracts, our plumbing contracts. Our busing contract had a slight increase for next year, and then our utilities kind of go up on an ongoing basis. This is very common, and we need to adjust these line items accordingly to maintain our operational costs. Special education, as we know, is always a big driver of the budget, and there are certainly some needs in our special education programs to meet student support services, provide the appropriate social and emotional support to students. So we're certainly reallocating funds in our contracted service lines to be able to provide those academic supports to students that we're educating in district, as well as to meet the needs of students that we continue to educate outside the district. The FY20 budget assumed that we would have 32 students being educated outside the district due to a variety of factors, of some students in some cases coming back to North Reading, some students aging out of out-of-district programs. We're actually anticipating at this point a decline in the number of students in FY21 that would be being educated outside the district. So there's actually some line items like the out-of-district tuition and transportation costs that are going down in FY21 because of that dynamic. So based on those drivers, I think you can kind of see by this chart, some of these drivers at play. So the salaries, I talked about the contractual obligations that we have with our unions and our staff and our personnel, which makes up over 83% of our budget requests. Coupled with the new positions driven by enrollment changes at the elementary level and our strategic plan, you can see that why there's an increase of 5.1% when you look at salaries in these major expense categories. Instructionally, that increase there is certainly driven by areas of our strategic plan to focus on, to fund the discretionary expense budgets at the school level by an appropriate amount on a per pupil basis, as well as continue to drive technology forward. So there is some increase here in technology, some of the technology line items for software and so forth to support our access points and our wireless infrastructure and our devices that we've brought online and so increased over the last four or five years. Some of those contracts are going up, so we've had to adjust accordingly. And it's a commitment to continue our one-to-one initiative program at grades seven through 12 that we've fully implemented this year. So all of these are certainly driving the instructional expenses up. And then operationally, we work very hard to control our operational costs, to control our utilities, our energy consumption, but these have fixed increases that we need to adjust, so that's why you're seeing a slight increase there. And then the last bullet in the last slide, some of the changes in the out-of-district programs at the special education side is really behind some of these decreases from FY20, in terms of less students that we're now transporting to an out-of-district program, less students that were now having out-of-district programs, or at least forecasting at this stage for FY21, is driving some of these decreases. Yes?
Michael, just a quick question about the 5.1% on the salaries.
Yes.
Apart from COLA and the different contracts we've negotiated, what else causes that to go up?
So if we were to add no existing staff and just look at what we're contractually negotiated to increase, now this is across all the unions and non-union, union and so forth. We're also, this is a little bit of a challenge in next year, and we run into this every so often, because we have three contracts of, that we're currently negotiating, that we don't quite know the final impact of, that we've had to build in a salary pool. So if you just look at those increases alone, we need, that increase needs to be about two and a half percent.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other increases actually driven by new positional increases, driven by enrollment, which you'll see in a moment when I get to the new positions, there's a couple of positions being added to maintain the appropriate class sizes due to some changes at the elementary level with students moving up to grades and so forth across the three schools. And then you'll see there's actually four positions being proposed as part of our strategic plan and operationally being added. So coupled with our contractual obligations and then the new positions is what's playing into that 5.1%. Thank you.
Michael, I want one quick question while we're on that. Just, so last year at Finance Planning, we changed it where what was above and below the line, and health insurance came to the schools. That's not including health insurance, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So health insurance is still part of the revenue plan, it still guides what we're, eventually will be appropriated to the school department through the town revenue plan, but health insurance is still on the town side of the books, in a sense.
Right. Even though it's, even though we've made some changes how we've been doing it.
Correct.
We're not showing health insurance in our budgets here.
Correct. Yep, that's a good question. So when you look at all those numbers, this is just the pie chart. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we had 83.6% is salaries. This is pretty consistent breakdown here. I think the biggest change is from prior years, you see more, more funds kind of go towards the operation maintenance side to address some needs there. And the tuition, the tuition line item here is less than what it's been due to some forecasted assumptions on what's going to happen there with students being educated outside the district. But these are relatively consistent instructional expenses, have been just about under 4%. Oops, sorry about that. So just a couple of quick slides here, I'll just go over quickly, because this has been slides I've shown in the past, but, you know, we've certainly had to reallocate funding over the last five years, in part because of this campus, this beautiful campus, state-of-the-art facility, to meet our building grounds and maintenance needs. So we learned a lot about the needs of this campus, we're operating a new wastewater treatment facility. That alone accounts for about $200,000 of new operational building and maintenance line items that we didn't have, let's say, in fiscal year 14. So if you look across, you know, in fiscal 14, we were at a baseline of around $400,000 due to a variety of changes, needs of this building, and just cost escalations with utilities and things going up. But really, to address the needs of all of our campuses, add in some new preventative maintenance contracts that we've committed to for the heating and cooling equipment and the energy management systems, and to address the needs of the wastewater treatment facility, which was new to us six years ago, we're really at a new baseline of, you know, up in, you know, north of $800,000. And that's just a reality that we've had to do, adjust and reallocate resources over the last five or six years. So it's certainly been a challenge, it's certainly been a budget driver. I think you're seeing a little bit this level off to a degree, which I think is good news. We're not seeing these big increases that you saw back early on when this building, for instance, opened, and we're hoping that's the case. There's still needs here, and we still need to adjust some line items. Anyway, we're trying to add back some extraordinary maintenance lines and restore those to an appropriate level, because we're seeing the need for that more than ever. And we're also trying to add back some small, some funds for small capital and equipment needs as well, so. So that's certainly been a budget, and on the same end, the utility side costs as well. You know, at one point, we were a little under, around $575,000, just under about, right here, and, you know, now we're much, you know, up to almost $900,000. It's kind of a need to, for our gas, electricity, and our water, our main utilities, driven by much larger campus, much larger needs here, and we're doing, we're working very hard to control these costs, and I do think we do a very good job in managing it, but it's certainly, these costs go up every year. So our enrollment, so you'll see in a moment that we do have some enrollment needs and increases, and, you know, even though that enrollment's sort of been somewhat stabilizing, there's been no major shifts. I think the biggest changes that you'll see in Fiscal 21 is at the high school level, where the high school level is going to decline by a projected amount of over 50 students next year. We may drop to about 700 or just under 700 next year. And the middle school is relatively stabilizing, which is the black line here, you know, going up slightly, but stabilizing at about 550 students. And then the elementary level, district-wide, is projected to go up by about 20, 20 students, so it may look like, seem like a moderate increase. But when you look at across the five grade levels across the three different schools and the needs and the shifts in staff, there's a much higher full-day kindergarten program, you know, kindergarten population moving up to grade one. And to manage those class sizes, keep them into an appropriate level, ideally between 18, 20, or no more than 22, we've had to reallocate in some staff to address some increases at the grade one level due to a higher kindergarten enrollment moving up next year. And then there's also others, some changes in grade five at a particular elementary school as well that we feel like we need to address to provide a level of equity and maintain the optimum class sizes. There is a lower kindergarten, at this point, class coming in, but that's projected, so there is some, you know, staffing efficiencies there, but it's not quite to the level that we've had to adjust in some other areas. So if you look at what our proposed new positions are, first and foremost, to address this need at the elementary level, when you look across the, really the sixth grade levels, kindergarten through grade five, across the three elementary schools, we feel we need an additional of 1.5 net FTE there to address some of these changes. And that would keep class sizes at the optimum level within school committee guideline between 18 students and 20 and 22 to a class. When you get into our strategic plan, those are the highlighted yellow areas, italicized amounts in the chart, you can see there's four positions highlighted here. The two academic teachers at the middle school, this is really a continuation of our two-year vision to expand middle school programs, both foreign language and STEM. You may recall from last year, we started this program by adding a .5 foreign language last year. That was really a two-year vision to continue to introduce foreign language and That was really a two-year vision to continue to introduce foreign language and STEM programs to enhance and advance the curriculum program at the middle school. So a lot is gained by this two-year vision and this need, both from a scheduling standpoint at the middle school as well as in advancing that curriculum, expanding foreign language across the three grade levels, introducing technology, science, you know, the STEM curricular area at the middle school. So that is certainly a high priority in the request this year. The elementary teaching and learning coordinator is an administrative position. It's been part of our strategic plan now for a number of years. We have not been able to fund it. It's been on this list in the past, but we really see this position as really assisting the three elementary school principals to provide support in the following areas: curriculum, instruction, assessment, and then certainly assisting with supervision and evaluation. So it's certainly a high need and we certainly see it as a priority as we certainly head into fiscal year twenty-one. The reading specialist, that's also been a position that's fallen just short, that's been a priority and been on this list in the past. We see this one point oh reading teacher assisting all three elementary schools to help them more fully implement response to intervention strategies and academic supports for students in need. And, you know, we certainly see this as a, the ability for all three schools to increase their reading support and co-teaching, and is the goal that students will improve their fluency and comprehension across all subject areas. And having a one point oh will allow the school to, will allow all three schools to provide the supports necessary to meet the need for these academic supports in the area of reading across all grade levels. The floater custodian, that is an operational position that we have tried to fund in the past. You may recall this being on the list last year. There is some built-in savings in overtime by having this position, so it's not necessarily a position that would carry a twenty-four thousand dollar salary, but we feel like the position will allow us to stay within the appropriate industry cleaning standards of square footage area per cleaner or per custodian that we're trying to get to. And there are many days that we are, don't quite have a full complement of staff, so this, having the access to a floater custodian to float amongst all four campuses will allow the schools not to fall behind and maintain the appropriate cleaning that needs to happen without pulling from second shift staff to come to shift one and incur overtime. So we become more operationally efficient, meet our needs, our cleaning needs, and there's some savings there as well in the overtime area. So all, in total, yes.
Are these ranked in any particular order or not?
I would say, I would say it's fair to say these are ranked in the order that they're listed by the administrative teams. We've had a lot of conversations about these positions. We, elementary class sizes continues to be a priority by the administrative team, certainly the elementary principals protecting class sizes, keeping them optimum levels, keeping them equitable. We see that as a level service adjustment. The academic teachers at the middle school, we thought we made advancements last year. We want to continue that, so I think those two are the highest of priorities. And then the teaching learning coordinator, the reading specialist, you know, shortly thereafter, and then operationally, that floater custodian. So I think it's fair to say these are ranked. So when you look at our budget with those five positions, I'm sorry, six point five positions in mind, so again, that's six point five FTE that we're looking to add, that's a little bit of a cost of about four hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-two. The NRPS-driven positions are about three hundred thirteen, nine sixty-three of this, as you can see in the write-up there, which is adds just under about one percent to our four point five percent budget request. So here are the numbers. We are looking at a budget request appropriation in the general fund, the request for the town to support of thirty-three million, one ninety-nine, five thirty, which is a little more than a one point four million dollar increase. And when you compare that to FY twenty, it's four and a half percent higher than FY twenty. That doesn't tell the full story as we know. I showed the chart earlier about the school department's grants and revolving accounts, federal entitlement grants, state grants, circuit breaker program for special education, reimbursement program, and our revolving accounts, which we'll see a little more detail in a moment. So if you add that, those additional funding areas in, a little over three point two million, we're really looking at a total school budget of thirty-six million, four hundred five thousand, thirty dollars. And to Mr. Buckley's point, this still doesn't include health insurance and benefits that's still on the town side, but from the school department standpoint, a little over thirty-six point four million to cooperate the school budget. And that doesn't fully tell the story because, as you know, we accept a variety of in-kind gifts and donations from our booster groups, our support groups, private donors at each school committee meeting. That's kind of an annual average of about two hundred and fifty thousand. And then you have our five PTOs, parent teacher organizations, PTA's, parent teacher associations that help fund class field trips, enrichment programs, teacher supplies, classroom supplies, technology equipment. Their just annual school budgets fund about seventy-five thousand, so really a lot goes into the full picture to make the North Reading educational experience is what it is. A lot of folks beyond what the town's appropriating, beyond what we're assessing in our optional programs with user fees, tuition costs, state and federal grants, as well as our generous work by our booster and support groups, parent groups, really, really tell the full story. So just one more time, and see where we're at in terms of salaries and expenses and what our offsets are broken down between salaries and expenses. Thirty-three, one ninety-nine, five thirty is the request, four and a half percent increase. So typically, we look at the budget in three ways. Just very quickly, we look at what does it mean to be level services, and that's really adjusting the budget for our fixed operational costs, our cost to meet our contractual obligations with our employees and our employee unions, cost to adjust for changes in enrollment, so these certainly, those enrollment positions that would be included in column one here, level services, and then our fixed expense increases and so forth for operationally. That budget would need a three point seven percent increase alone. And then the budget we recommended this evening is somewhat of a, you know, is an in-between between a full requested budget, you know, not looking at money being a factor and looking at fully implementing our strategic plan, NRPS twenty twenty-one. Would carry many more positions, which I'll show you in a moment what those would be, and that would be a budget of about a six point six percent increase. But again, we're looking at, we're recommending this evening, that middle column, trying to find what is going to have the biggest educational impact, what's going to move the district forward, what's going to be in line with our strategic plan, and trying to keep also an eye on what the community can afford.
And Michael, before, you're going to go the upper end, but for the difference between level services and recommended, what are the positions that come off for level services from the recommended?
Yeah, so the positions that come off between level services and recommended, I'm just going to quickly go back, in our opinion, would be the bottom three positions. So we actually consider these first two lines as level services. We consider the classroom elementary teachers adjustment as a level services, meet our enrollment shifts at the elementary level. And we do because we started this this year, and we see that as being a continuation of a two-year vision. It's also in our NRPS twenty twenty-one document, but, you know, we started this shift as being a level services adjustment. If we were not to fund that, it's really a taking a step back we'll be sort of envisioned having today and when we started in FY twenty. So it's those three point five positions included in level services, and then the bottom three would not, would be in the middle column.
Well, Michael, just to clarify on that middle, on those two middle school positions, would that, if we were not funding those two, would we need to roll back some of the stuff that we did this year?
I think, I want to say that is the case in most-
The first two positions?
Yes, the two academic teachers at the middle school.
We'd have to roll back. We would have to no longer offer STEM and worldwide in grade six. So that's why we're putting in as level services to continue what we're offering currently. But also, it's the second half of the course is in grade six. So this is part two of a plan, and that's how it was proposed last year.
Yep. Great. And then if you, the positions, again, if we were to try to fully implement a budget that would almost meet all of the NRPS twenty twenty-one initiatives, we would be looking at adding about six point five additional positions, an additional five hundred and two thousand and change to the budget request. And that would, this was the six point six percent budget. And again, a lot of important positions here in terms of moving forward with our technology integration strategy and our curriculum leadership model. At the secondary model, we're trying to adjust it, or address it at the elementary level with the teaching learning coordinator as part of the request. Student support services at the, at the elementary level, enhancing those initiatives with the school adjustment counselors. The facilities engineer, we talked about that last year. I know we have some, you know, we're hopeful we can continue to achieve that in perhaps other ways. And then, you know, these are the positions that would be part of that plan. So where, where does, oh, yes.
One more comment? If you add the requested positions on that last slide to the recommended budget, it doesn't, it doesn't get the full requested. It's still a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short.
Oh, okay.
Is that the-
So that, thank you. So that, the additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars would also be, in the third-tier budget, we included a request to potentially reduce the full-day kindergarten tuition fee by, by an amount. You know, right now, it's four thousand two hundred and fifty. That would probably mean making that about, you know, three thousand two hundred dollars, you'll, and that would add about a hundred, fifty thousand dollars, excuse me, to, to the appropriation. So that, that was part of that, that full, fully recommended budget, because that was also was talked about in budget subcommittee meetings, and it was referenced briefly at the last school committee meeting, that that was discussed at budget subcommittee. So that, that was in that third column. Thank you for bringing that to my attention as well. So where does this, this operating budget stand in terms of prior years? We haven't, we've typically been between four and four and a half percent at this stage in the game in terms of what our request is to the school committee as an administration recommends that, and we're doing that for the first time this evening. And what's actually been funded, you can see over the last number of years where we've been at. We've been slightly under four percent these last four years. In the ten-year average, or since two thousand and ten, we're at three point three percent. So it's fair to say is our request of four and a half percent is certainly higher than what we've been able to get funded over the last, on average, the last ten years or the last, certainly the last five years. But again, we're trying to find that balance between moving the district forward, meeting our strategic plan initiatives, the highs of priorities, and, and trying to find that balance here. So there's certainly, this is certainly the beginning of that process, and we'll certainly be debating many of these requests in the, in the coming, coming weeks. So I'd like to show this slide. The FY nineteen date is not quite out yet. Usually comes out any day now. In the middle of March, beginning of March, the DESE publishes the FY nineteen per pupil spending, so this is still FY eighteen. But I think it just goes to show you that we are below the state, state average. So we are at fourteen thousand, four eighty-eight over here when you look at our dollars per student in terms of all funds, and then the state is at, average is fifteen thousand, four fifty. So we're about six point six percent lower than the state average, so I think it's just fair to say that we continue to provide a high-quality education in North Reading at lower spending levels when compared to the state average. And that's always been a stat that we've been pretty kind of proud of over the last number of years.
Does that include special education?
It, it does, yep. So I'm going to, just really quickly, just, these are our budget offsets. So if you look at our direct costs, these are kind of the six major budgetary offsets in terms of what we're assessing a user fee or a tuition cost for. And you can see what our direct costs are for these optional programs, intuition-based programs here on the, on the far column, what the direct costs to support the salaries of, or the direct expenses or contracts as part of these optional programs. And then on an annual amount, what the user fee or tuition contribution is, and then what is that on a percentage basis, how much of that offset the direct cost? So these have been pretty consistent over the last two or three years. I've been putting up this slide for about four or five years, and I haven't made major changes to these breakdowns in terms of what each of the user fee or tuition fee contribution is supporting. So overall, we're just shy of about fifty percent of these optional programs in terms of what is being funded in the general fund or the operating budget and what's being funded in the revolving accounts based on the fees that are being charged. So just really quickly, some of the things that we do, we work very hard to contain our costs. You know, we purchase from state bid lists whenever possible to make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck. We work very hard to modulate boilers and occupancy schedules of both our energy management system and our lighting controls to control electricity and lighting costs. We work and bid our gas rates through a power options purchasing contract, and we monitor the market to lock in gas rates at an optimum level. In terms of special education, we certainly commit, have a commitment, ongoing commitment to where, when appropriate, to keep students in our schools through the design of customized programming. We're a member of two collaboratives, both SEEM and North Shore. We participate in the SEEM transportation collaborative model, so we share our costs, out-of-district special education, transportation costs with twelve to fourteen area districts. The food service program's done a great, great job, as we all know, over the last number of years, and we've been able to eliminate that, that general fund subsidy from the budget. We pursuing E-rate, through that federal E-rate program opportunities, and we're looking at the new federal program and where category two filing can fit into our existing contracts through maintenance of our access points, our wireless infrastructure, and we're already looking to file for category two filing under the new program to help save. And this budget, FY twenty budget assumes that some savings achieved for doing that. And as you know, we're continuing to pursue other energy-saving initiatives. We have, we're putting out two RFPs for LED lighting across all five schools and what that could mean for savings eventually, as well as what our solar options are. So we're always pretty aggressive at finding ways to save and contain our costs and control our operational costs. So in kind of closing, what can you kind of conclude that the FY twenty-one budget accomplishes? And, you know, I think as we always, you know, need to do, it certainly allows us to meet our contractual obligations with our employees and our employee unions, that biggest cost driver. So that's certainly first and foremost. We have to make sure the budget accomplishes that. We always look at the new positions and what additional staffing is going to achieve, and those six point five FTE positions that is the ask, is the request this evening, will help us achieve these bullets. Maintain educationally sound student-teacher ratios, particularly at the elementary level. Advances the academic program at the secondary level, those two positions that we just spoke of, as administrative support to enhance curriculum, professional development opportunities, provide supervision and evaluation support at the elementary level. That's the elementary teaching and learning coordinator position. From an operational standpoint, the floater custodian certainly helps us address our operational needs at all five schools to maintain cleaning, maintenance, and energy consumption efficiency efforts. There's some additional funding here in technology, both to support our, our software contracts and our, preventing our maintenance contracts of our infrastructure, as well as to make sure we have the funding allocated to support our one-to-one program appropriately. And then all the fixed cost adjustments for the wastewater treatment facility, utilities, heating and cooling contracts, those preventative maintenance contracts for HVAC and so forth, systems, energy management systems allows us to meet our operational needs at all five schools and surrounding campuses. Every budget has its risks, and there's inherent risks with, when you put together a budget, these, these have been our risks over the last number of years. I mentioned earlier, we're projecting a decrease in the number of students that are going to be educated outside the district. We all know that can change very, very quickly, but we work with the best information we have at the time, and we, and that's what this budget assumes, there's a risk to that. The revenue estimates, there's always a risk and may not meet our projections. We do budget a savings amount for anticipated retirement. We know, we do know of some teachers that are retiring at the end of the year. There's always some attrition and so forth and teacher turnover, staff turnover, so there is some built-in assumptions based on trends and savings in that salary budget. Utility costs, you know, we know that remains variable. We do, we, I think we've got a good job and know what to expect there, but it, again, it's variable to, to an extent. We do have some carryover some- We do have some carryover assumptions, where legal, where appropriate, in terms of what we're able to sort of certainly carry over as we project to end FY20. We've been in the, the habit of prepaying special education tuitions with some projected balances at the end of the prior fiscal year, and that this FY21 budget assumes we'll continue to kind of do that, those same types of things, and have some funds available at the end of the year to prepay tuitions. There's always the unforeseen building and maintenance needs. We've had those come up this year. We've been able to, to do, address those and deal with those, but we're seeing those come up. And then the food service program can, can be difficult to predict as well. So those are some risks to kind of keep in mind. And then in terms of next steps, we have some ongoing discussions with the finance planning team about available revenues. I will note, I think in the slide, I just, on this point, there was some listing of where we are in terms of the revenue plan. Please disregard that. That was, that's, that's out of date. We really have yet to receive a, a revenue plan from the town that could happen later. So we don't really know where we stand currently with, with the town's available revenues. We hope that's all going to be determined in the coming weeks. We're gonna do a budget webinar on March 27th. I'll be publicizing that and sending out the invite for that this week. We'll have our first budget workshop on April 1st, public hearing on April 13th, workshop number two on April 29th. The school committee will, will vote on May 4th. Finance committee on May 6th. Town meeting is on June 8th. Continue to await state budget actions, and then we'll have discussion. So this is really the beginning of the, the process. There'll be plenty of opportunity to deliberate and discuss the budget at public meetings in the future, as well as the school committee budget workshops. But this is, this is really the, the beginning of where the administration's priorities are, where we feel we need to go in terms of FY21. And at this point, it's the process of us kind of turning the budget over to the school committee to, to deliberate and, and make some decisions in the near future. Excuse me. With that being said, I'm gonna, you know, open up if there's any discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. So we have a budget workshop where we'll go through a lot of like the book, the line by line, but for overarching questions and concerns?
Just one, one question. It's, it's on the smaller side, but.
You provided the breakdown of how much utility expenses are as a, as a net combining all the utilities?
Yes.
And then referenced that we're investigating ways to, to cut costs as far as solar and LED lights.
Right.
Do we have an idea of, right, I'm sure we do, but how much of our budget for utilities is going to electric and might be impacted by that?
So, yeah, so we have, I think we were up to almost 900,000 is like.
For the total, yeah.
Right. So I think about 550,000 of that is due, and I think based on preliminary estimates and proposals that we're getting in, we feel like once the project is, could be paid off.
Right.
We could save about $85,000 annually.
Okay.
And we're trying to accelerate that payback period and as much as we can, you know, potentially it's anywhere between three and five years.
Sure.
But we're looking at, we, we feel like an LED lighting project could save annually about $85,000.
Great. And then solar, maybe something else as well.
And solar, it could be a variety of options.
Right.
Whether you use behind the meter or front of the meter. We think that, you know, front of the meter might be more advantageous, but we'll, we'll see what happens with the proposals when they do come in. We think there could be some opportunity for some revenue there that would then offset our energy costs. It's hard to put a number on it until we get some proposals back.
Of course. Thank you. Other comments?
So I have a couple of quick comments and questions. So the, the first one is I just want to thank you, Mr. Connolly, for putting this together. You're always very inclusive of everything. And Dr. Daley, I know you worked with it as well, so thank you guys for putting this together. And specifically, I think it's worth noting, even though things go up, we've done a really good job in North Reading of containing costs and of getting reimbursements. I know in the last couple of years, you've, you know, you and Cynthia Conan have really worked a lot on getting reimbursements for special education costs when they were very high. And so only because of that are we even, you know, within a reasonable amount of a request. So thank you for all that. I mean, just a couple overarching comments would, number one is reserve funds. I mean, I think it's really important. I know that in the budget, we're, we're keeping them at, at what they were this year, but, you know, that one small reserve account that we restored last year was gone before the year even began. And so that is something where I think we have to be cognizant of that. I think there's a note in some of the upcoming materials or the, you know, one of the reports later on that even beyond what it, even beyond the, the membranes or whatever, like, there's been other expenses that could have been in there as well that, you know, when it, when there's not money there, it comes, it comes from something else. And so just want to make sure that maybe we think about, you know, even funding those a little bit higher if we can. And then obviously, my one concern is the full day kindergarten fee, and we'll talk more about it in the future, but I just think it's good to see it in the full requested budget. We'll not see it, but to know that it's, it's part of the full requested budget, but, you know, it's concerning. I mean, it's concerning when the fees go to pay for more than half of the full day kindergarten this year, and it's just something that I think we really need to put on there. And it, and it's, it's hard, it's hard to, to prioritize needs. It's hard to say, you know, we don't get a reading specialist, but we get, you know, a reduction in fees. But, you know, as Dr. Daley, I think eloquently put before, it is an equity issue at some point in time. And, you know, I think we all agree in class size as priority. I think we've all, last year, we're in, in support of the new programs at the middle school. But after that, I just think the question is, at what point in time do we look at the fee question? And I don't know what the answer is, but I think it's a discussion that we can have more in the future, and hopefully this year, and if not this year, hopefully for the future, it can be a priority that we think about.
Greg Allen?
I would, I agree with you, and, and even if we, even if we make a small start on the fee, I mean, we can talk about, as you say, we'll talk about it more over, over the next few weeks, but even if we can make a small start, I think that would be a nice step in the right direction, so.
Yes, Dr. Daley?
Just want to thank Mr. Connolly for his great work on this continued, and just, you know, in addition to this presentation being available, we also have videos that he produces that are short bites that are, that are out there, and he puts them out on Twitter, he puts them on the website. It's very timely and up to date, so thank you again for that. And I encourage everyone to, to watch it. You can pause it, you can go back, you can learn more. So thank you.
Okay. What's the name? Moving on, having here revised school committee meeting schedule. I know the public anxiously anticipates these meetings, so. And what's the revision on this one, Dr. Daley? Just the May 18th meeting?
Thank you so much. So as I mentioned last meeting, there is a, an event on May 11th that, for the bachelor and little school, and so this meeting is hosted at the little school, so we're suggesting that we move this to May 18th. And I've just given you the revised dates for the remainder of the year, including this change from May 11th to May 18th.
And do, do we know if the town meeting is for sure June 8th yet?
The.
Because I know town meeting could be adjusted. Do we know for sure it's gonna be June 8th?
I'm pretty sure. The meeting is set at that time, yeah.
Yeah.
And then there's a special town meeting as well, I believe?
Yeah, the special town meeting's coming up.
Okay.
Okay. So then with that, can I have a motion to accept the revised school committee meeting schedule?
Before you do that, can I ask one more question?
Of course.
June 8th. Is senior prom the first? June 1st? Just out of curiosity, because I know in the past.
We try to avoid it, yes.
Right. Well, it always hit until we decided to have the sliding change. So do you know off the top?
I don't know if it's out of my head, no. I can double-check the, the date for that.
I thought it was, and I'm not, I'm not 100% on that.
I think we've done that before.
June 5th is graduation this year, or is that, is that the one that got changed?
It would.
No, it's next year that got changed. Next year.
So then June 1st would have to be the senior prom. All right.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Would you like to make the motion now?
Sure, I will make the motion to accept the meeting schedule as presented for the school committee.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. And next, we have a couple of trips to discuss, I believe, that were baseball.
So the first letter that's in your packet is the trip for the North Reading baseball And this letter is from the, I'm sorry.
Athletic director?
This letter is from the athletic director. Thank you. Looking for my packet. And at this time, we just would require a, a vote to approve.
It's gonna be an overnight trip for how many nights?
It's for April 22nd and April 23rd. So it's the one night, yep.
Okay. Do you have a motion first to approve? I move that we approve the overnight trip. Okay, second?
Second.
And any discussion on this? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you. This time, we also have an additional overnight trip. This is one that, that happened last week. We were not able to get this on the agenda at a previous meeting, and I'm just gonna pass that around. That is a similar letter from, it's from Mr. LaPrette and from Ms. Pierce, who is the DECA after-school group coordinator. Students were able to compete in a DECA competition, sort of the state, state championships for this event. That occurred on Thursday through Saturday of last week.
And so to, so to be clear, this, it didn't make it in, it wasn't presented, there's been discussion about making sure that they do make it to the school committee in the future, but we should vote on it. But I, and I will point out that the superintendent did call me, wasn't able to get on the open, wasn't able to get on the meeting agenda in time, but I was aware of it, and so we want to just make sure we get the approval after the fact. And so can I have a motion to approve the DECA trip?
I will so move.
I will second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and next we have annual town meeting, a warrant article. Ooh, we get a warrant article this year?
Yeah, just a little background on the, the warrant article. So we are recommending approval of, for this town meeting warrant article for the June 8th town meeting due to the upcoming deadline, which is actually March 16th. So I think it's, it's necessary to, to talk about this warrant article this evening. So we're recommending action on the creation of a revolving account, which would essentially allow for the receipt of solar lease payments that would ultimately help offset the school department's energy costs. Should the district, you know, move forward with such a contract for next school year? We are in the process of putting together, I wish, I hope to be the final touches of an RFP. We're just trying to look at a few more things and research a few more items that are needed for this RFP. We hope that that will be done by the end of the week, and the RFP would actually advertise on March 11th, and in the local paper transcript on March 12th. And those proposals would be due back by the end of the month. And then we would go through that evaluation process to see, you know, we're not gonna know what the potential benefit is, what the potential revenue source would be, and the potential energy consumption offset, as we spoke of earlier, will be until proposals are received back in. So by moving this forward and meeting the March 16th deadline, and at least it gives us the opportunity, should proposals come in that are advantageous, to have something ready in time for the June 8th town meeting, which I think is necessary. I will say the town council is in the process of reviewing this warrant language. I've been in touch with the town administrator. Based on our research, this is how the communities that have had such type of a contract have, have arranged it and have handled it, and this is the applicable laws. But it is in the hands of the town council, and he's reviewing it. I'm waiting to hear back from him.
Questions, comments?
I would just say that I'm very excited that this process has moved forward so quickly, and I thank you guys for all your efforts, especially you, Mr. Connolly, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Obviously, it's been something we've been, we've talked about a little bit, and I, I think it could be a good thing on a lot of different levels, so.
It's great that we have Michael to do the goals that we put on a school, on the school committee.
Yeah, it's great. We could check that, check that way off.
We should, we should do even more goals next year.
Exactly.
So my only, my, couple comments and questions as well.
The secret, Scott, is to make sure our goals align with what.
What they're doing.
What the administration would like to do, so.
I know. I always say it's the leadership that we provide. I'm just kidding. So a couple of questions. First and foremost, so this is a more general, it's more general than just solar, or, so it's for all rentals. So as a goal, I know, I know in the current budget, there's already some rental income that we have for use of performing arts center and the gymnasium and other, other areas. Would all funds then go into this revolving fund?
No. So the idea is because of this is, the idea is to actually keep those separate, and to keep the, the use of school facility rental revenue to still flow in through the revolving account as is, and that this be a separate revolving account to particularly track the solar lease payments, if that's, ends up being how that program is structured, to offset the energy costs. So when communities have done this, they've all felt it's important to separate those, those two with a separate revolving account. I, I would agree in terms of tracking and, and monitoring the, the payments.
And, and so how would this be used? Like, if money goes in, does it have, it just goes in from there, but does it have to be voted on only by school committee, or is this a town meeting vote to have money come out of this?
The town, the town meeting essentially establishes the, the revolving account and under this applicable law for, for this purpose. Once that's established, we would have the ability to, to deposit the revenue and then offset the, the, that's the school budget through our energy costs and that utility budget is what we would plan to do.
Okay, so the school committee on its own could act, or, or the, doesn't even need school committee, can just be the, as long as there's expenses that offset it, there's no requirement?
Yeah, it would become, just like the other revolving account offsets that are annual subsidies and offsets, like full-day kindergarten and athletic revolving, it would become another offset in the budget that would be listed in the budget when the budget's appropriated.
Okay.
We need to approve this with the provision that, you know, including any changes that the, the town council may.
I think that would probably be prudent, yes, because, right.
So my only other question is because of town warrant meeting, and this may not need to be a, a warrant, but last year, we established a fund for special education costs as well to try to put some money in there. I don't think we need another warrant article for that, but I, but is there any, do you know if there's any idea about, or any discussion about putting money in there again this year, and trying to fund it this year as well, or not?
Um.
I haven't heard any.
Yeah, I have not heard any either. It has not come up at finance planning team to date.
I know.
But it doesn't mean it won't as we get into the budget discussions, the serious budget discussions from this point forward. They, they certainly talked about an annual program to do, to do that.
Yeah.
So it's a good, it's a good question.
Janine?
Just out of curiosity, when we set up the other revolving funds, the athletic, the boosters, all that stuff, we didn't need to go to town warrant. Why are we doing it on this one specifically?
So it's just because the other, it's the, the section of the law that it falls under, is my understanding. So the other ones are under mass general law is chapter 71, which doesn't require town meeting appropriation, but this one does in terms of it's, how it's established, because it falls under chapter 40.
So the town wouldn't, just the revenues generated from the town would not fall into this? This would solely be whatever is generated from whatever solar.
Correct. Right.
We have.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve it? And since, Rich, you want to put the contingencies in? Do you want to?
Sure. I move that the school committee approve the proposed warrant article as written with the provision that should the town council require any changes, that, that would also be included in our approval.
I would just, I would, I would modify for non-substantive changes. I mean, like.
For non, for.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if it completely changes the purpose of it.
To make...to...yes.
It makes sense.
Yeah. So, start over.
That we approve the article, the warrant article to establish the rental revolving fund with the provision that any non-substantive changes made by the town council would also be included in our approval.
I second exactly what he said.
Okay. Can you repeat?
That's a long way of...
Okay.
I couldn't improve on it.
We could probably spend half an hour wordsmithing that to make it a little shorter, but we'll just go with that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you, Mike. And Patrick?
Thank you.
A lot of hard work, Ben.
Okay, and before-school childcare discussion?
Yes, thank you. So, there is some information, including in your packet, a memorandum, and some additional information about the before-school childcare program. The administration recently solicited a survey to the elementary school parents regarding our before-school child program. We're happy to see that most parents were very pleased with the program. The biggest request that we've really received from parents, even some calls each year when we publicize the registration process, which is on or about around this time each year, is the desire for many parents to have an earlier drop-off option. So, for the last number of years, since the creation of the program, the earliest drop-off target point has been 7:30 a.m. And I've gotten more and more calls each year with that request. You know, why can't we go 7:00 a.m.? Even 7:15 would help me, but, you know, 7:00 a.m. would be a game changer, those types of comments. So, we kinda discussed it as an administrative team. We felt the survey was warranted to help see the level of interest, as well as other feedback about the program, the breakfast program, a variety of things were included in the survey. That survey was administered in the month of February. And those results came in. And certainly, we felt there was enough, as an administrative team, that there was enough interest with about over 55% of the folks that had responded really had a desire to have an earlier drop-off time available. So, we sort of put our heads together and tried to come up with a way to make that happen. We discussed a variety of different ways of how we could increase the rates or do structure the program in such a way that allows for the earlier drop-off while keeping the rates very affordable. And that's been a goal of us, of the program, and of the administration and of the district for many years, to keep these rates affordable. And I'm happy to report that this is sort of what we came up with. This is the administrative team has all weighed in on this option. And so, we are this evening prepared to recommend an increase in the monthly charges of the before-school childcare program. That would also include an expansion of the hours of the program moving to 7:00 a.m., which we think is a need in the community and that many parents would be able to, would be very, very happy to hear that. And we've tried to keep that increase to be able to make this happen for many, many families as affordable as we can. And so, we ran a variety of options and numbers. And we do feel like the recommended option that's being presented on page two in the memo does allow for us to cover the costs of the program by expanding some of the staff's hours to, from 7:30 to 7:00 a.m. We did...we poll communities in the area from time to time. And I'm pleased that even despite this increase, I believe we still remain very, very affordable. And we are still below the market in a sense. And we're still below many area communities' daily, monthly rates that they are charging. And many of these communities also allow the 7:00 a.m. option. So, I think it's time for us to kinda do this. It's been talked about for the last two or three years. The interest is there. Just this past week, I'm getting calls wondering, you know, is that gonna happen? I really need that to happen and so forth. So, you know, so I am prepared to kind of...we're prepared to sort of recommend this change. And we'll continue to monitor it and monitor the revenue and see what happens. But, you know, I think it's been certainly, you know, time for us to move in this direction. So, with that being said, I'll open up to any discussion or...
So, my first question to just jump in is, has there been any discussion about dropping off the night before? Or possibly on the weekends? No?
No, no.
I suspect the...well, I suspect the rise in... Rise in interest in early drop-offs is coinciding with the increasing length of the commute into Boston every morning.
Probably.
Pretty big...pretty big impact, I suspect.
So, I see the revenue for current rates and how it'll go up by about 10% it looks. Is this right now pretty, pretty cost-neutral? Where are we gonna go? Okay.
Yeah, it's about cost-neutral. We tried to make it that way.
Yeah. Keep it so affordable.
The increase as low as possible, but based on our assumptions, you know, to cover the cost as well. So, we talked about it doing it a couple of different ways. Part, you know, we had a proposal, quite honestly, that was on the table in discussion in our administrative meetings to, you know, only charge those districts that opt into, like a special option, a special early drop-off option. And then, if you elect into that, you would be charged. There were some administrative challenges into tracking that and monitoring that. And that actually would probably mean families were paying about, you know, $500 more a year to opt into that option, where we felt a minimal increase of, you know, about $8 a month over nine months for all, or less. It was $8 or less would allow us to make it happen, and the option is just there. It's available for everyone. It was the best option.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
There is a recommended motion.
Yeah. I mean, I...I mean, honestly, I mean, it seems... To get another half hour, it almost seems like it's not enough to cover it, but it was very reasonable.
Well, well done, yeah.
The program does assume...so, we're gonna have staggered staff shift. So, we don't think, based on the data that came in, we don't think we're gonna need fully-staffed everyone arriving at quarter of. So, we tried to make it work where there was not gonna be one person. We need more than one, obviously. But we think, based on the number of people that are gonna be arriving and the ratio of staff to student ratio that we are meeting, it's gonna be a staggered shift. And that's how we're keeping it low. We'll have to monitor that, obviously.
Sure.
But that's what it assumes.
And so, to start off with, you're just...you're not asking people to declare. They're just gonna start bringing them in at whatever time, so...
Yep.
You just have to be ready for...
Right.
...just to see how it goes, but yeah.
Right, exactly. So...
The only other question I have...so, the...right now, it's 44 for a monthly charge, which is $5.50 a day for two days, or 24 is $5.50. And it's going to $6.25. And one of them's a $6 increase, and the other one's only a $1 increase, and it stays the exact same? Something seems off about that.
Well...
The math somehow seems off.
I'm trying to convert the monthly to about an average cost per day using about an average of 20 operating days in a month. So...
I know.
I think they were all...they were all changing from the prior year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just...it seems like the current charge may be off somehow.
Yeah, there's just a...24 to 44 isn't quite a doubling, but it's counted that way, but...
Whatever.
And yeah, and the...
So, if it's one or two days, it's the same $6.25, and that's...I just wanna make sure the math is correct on it, 'cause something looks slightly off to me. I don't know why. I'm trying to understand.
That's just...that's just the cost per day.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just...we charge on a monthly basis.
Okay.
Over a nine-month period. So, I think it's...
So, it's only going up a dollar?
Yeah, there is very few people, I think it's less than five people, that opt for one day.
Yeah.
One-day coverage. So, that has minimal impact, so we were keeping it...the change very low.
Yeah, I think what just seems off is like, it's going up a dollar, but it's 75 cents more per day. I don't know.
Okay.
Whatever. Okay, so...
I can look at that, but I think it's...the idea for there is, if you look at the $25 cost, it should be 25 divided by four.
No, you've got it, yeah.
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 And it doesn't make you nervous?
The recommended ones are all...the math is...
The 24 divided by four was not right the year before.
It's the 2019 to 2020 that's a little off.
Of the previous year.
But it's...
Yeah, 'cause 24 divided by four would be six, not by 50, so I think that's probably what it was, yeah.
It doesn't make you nervous at all, just going by current state of what you know the parents are doing?
Yeah, a little, I mean...
Yeah.
I think it's a little...yeah, it's a little...there's some risk there.
It's really a point in time and a change.
So, you know, parents suddenly...we don't think all of a sudden, parents are gonna change their process and all start dropping off early. If that does, we have to adjust the staff. This would be a particular issue. But we actually think we have a reserve that we, at least for the first year, we'd be able to deal with it.
Yeah.
And then, that's what we're gonna...
And they come back to the committee if you need it to.
Yeah, correct.
That's right.
Yeah.
I wouldn't think that the financial risk would be huge.
It's not huge.
Yeah, so we can adjust and then adjust the price next year.
Right, right.
He's got 45% of the people in the survey saying they would not, not likely to do it. So, we're hoping that that follows that trend.
Right.
And in terms of usage right now, is there a limit on how many kids students can do it? Because the other possibility is more people could drop off if it's earlier, and there could be people that aren't dropping off now that would do it?
Who weren't taking advantage at all.
Because it hasn't been early enough, right?
Yeah, because it hasn't been early enough.
You open it up to seven, and you have more people.
There could be more people that, like, would do that, but...
I...it went out to everyone.
Yeah.
So, the data, there were some questions around that. It didn't seem like that was gonna be a huge issue, but we'll have to monitor it.
I mean, currently, is there like a limit on how many students we have? And are we at that limit in schools, or can...
So, we've never had to...we've never had...there's never been a waiting list. We've never had to turn anyone away, and that's our goal. We try to keep a 1 to 12 student, staff to student ratio. We've had to add staff before at the bachelor school, for instance, which is where the most, the larger participation is. So, we've never been at that point, where we've been close to limits and capacity issues or anything to that effect.
Yeah, I mean, from a staff standpoint, it's gonna be built into the price, right?
Correct.
The more...
Yep.
But it's just...it's just a facility...maybe it's a facility issue, I don't know. But, you know, it seems like it's designed to pay for itself, no matter how many people show up.
Correct.
Okay, so can we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the changes to the early childcare?
As recommended by the administration?
Ah, thank you, sorry, I wasn't reading it. I was free-willing, yeah. I keep having to scroll up and down, it's killing me. Sorry, one second, I'll do a much better job reading that. Ah, yes.
I'm gonna hold for the real motion.
Very good. I'm gonna hold for the real motion. Thank you, please do. It's important that I get all of the words right. I move that...oh, it's...
Here, I move...
I'm not ready for prime time.
Rich, go ahead.
I move that the school committee vote to approve the before-school childcare rate increases for the 2020...2021 school year as recommended by the administration. The increase, including expanding the program hours to begin at 7:00 a.m. at each elementary school.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for...
Great, thank you.
Sitting in silence here, thank you. The numbers really show what an excellent job you guys have done with it. The assistant superintendent search timeline. Dr. Daly, would you like to talk, guide us through this?
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Buckley. So, included in your packet is a schedule, draft schedule for the process for the assistant superintendents, with the position that I was formerly in this role. Part of the consideration is that informally, I feel that I have a handful of internal candidates that would be very interested in this position. And so, just to think about the possible ripple effect, if an internal candidate is hired, we'd try to get this position filled. And if we were to follow this timeline, we would have an appointment, which would be a recommendation, that I would make a recommendation to the school committee for appointment by April 13th, which would just about for, you know, April vacation, would get that position, which would then allow us the time to, if we did have a principal or an assistant principal or some other hires to make, we would have time to try to get those positions filled before July. And so, it's somewhat of an aggressive timeline, but I think that this, you know, this has been shared internally with our administrative team, and folks feel that this is a good timeline. So, posting during March, interviewing, reviewing questions, interviews on April 7th. We would assemble a team of committee members. And one, I did suggest that a school committee member serve in that team. If there was someone that wanted to be interested, we could discuss that tonight to serve that. The only real-time commitment that I've identified would be on this April 7th date. I've identified three times for interviews. There may be an additional time needed, but at this time, there are, you know, three candidates who have mentioned their interest. If we did not receive interest from internal candidates, I'm thinking if there was at least two, we would do an internal look first. If there is only one, I probably would consider possibly opening this up, and then I would need a different timeline. But I'm fairly confident that we will have two, three, maybe more internal candidates interested.
So, a couple of quick questions. So, since I have not been through a search for an assistant superintendent, which means everybody other than Janine hasn't been through one. So, in terms of the process, so the...for the superintendent, the committee just made a recommendation to the school committee, who then made the decision as to who was gonna be appointed? Is it the same way here where the committee makes a recommendation? It's not the committee's call, it's your call, just to be clear, correct?
It's my recommendation and his appointment. And we haven't...I don't think we've ever done it in this town, because when I was in the role, I was already here. It was a title change, similar to what we went through with Michael. It was not a new position that was hired. And so, that is my understanding.
Yeah, I'm not even sure that the committee, that the search committee even needs to make a recommendation. When we did...when I was on the search committee for the high school principal, there was no recommendation. We went through the process, we had our comments, but...
Sure.
There was not a vote to say who we thought should be hired.
Well, 'cause actually, the committee for the superintendent search, all it did was determine whether or not they were... whether or not to put it forward or not, whether or not they met all their criteria.
That's more of a...that's a...yeah, no, it's a different process.
So, we can review that. My, you know, my review was that, you know, it's my recommendation, and you would recommend to you the appointment. So, I would give you an update for that piece, but you're aware and involved of assistant superintendents. It's a little bit different than, you know, student support, that special ed director position, the financial officer of the district, and the superintendent, which are completely under your purview. But I do believe that when it's an assistant superintendent, as opposed to just a director of curriculum, that I do need to make a recommendation to the...
Okay. So, and in terms of the school committee member, I don't know what the timeline is, but I think it's... I mean, if we could have a...if there's anybody interested right now?
I would volunteer for it.
Okay. Chris, anybody else interested, or...
I would be as well. If you can't make it, I'd have outside of that.
Okay. Do we want to appoint somebody tonight for it, or are you...
I don't know that...
I don't know if they...
I don't know that we need to be an appointment.
Did we...what do we do for the...
It's a more informal committee.
Yeah.
So, it's not...it doesn't have the same...whatever we did for the superintendent, it doesn't have that same sort of legal standing.
Yeah. I don't...again, I don't know the process with the assistant superintendent, so...yeah. And I would support, I know Chris has been interested in just to get more people on there. And, yeah, people are interested in...I mean, it's good.
It's good that people wanna...it's good that people wanna be a part of it, so it's great.
Okay. And do you think you can find other people that are...I assume you started other people that wanna be on the committee as well? Or have you started doing that?
I have confirmed with all the administrative team and the administrative assistants. Those are those, the two that are working most closely with this position. And I will reach out after this timeline's approved, hopefully, soon, to the curriculum leaders at the three levels. And I'm sure out of those 25 or so folks, we just need to have three. So, I'm very confident we'll get the full committee.
And actually, the...not to make it more difficult, but a lot of times committees also have parents or students on them? Is there any discussion about having a parent or a student involved in, on the committee? I don't know.
Yeah, we did discuss that a little bit. We decided not to do that at this time, but I would be open, if that is a suggestion, I'd be more than happy to.
So, given the nature of the position, being a little more internal, inward-facing than outward-facing, I think either way is a...you could certainly go either way. I don't think it's...but...
I don't have a strong opinion either way, I don't know.
I agree with Rich that it's...your way of putting it is right, that it's more inward-facing. I think about teachers being there, but they're gonna be represented by three curriculum leaders who are teachers, so, yeah. I think it's a good balance.
Okay.
Do you, let me ask, have you crafted the posting, how you're describing the job yet?
I have, I took the, the one that I was working on, I made a few modifications, a few changes. Since I took the role, we have hired a full-time, now we have our director of digital learning, so I think there's less technology in the position. And there's a few other slight changes that, that we feel, when, when Michael is in his role, I think some of the human resources things have shifted a little bit, but essentially, it's the same position that we have there.
Okay, so there's no vote needed? Sounds good, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, for routine matters, we have the minutes. Mrs. Imbriano, anything on the executive session?
Look them over and they look wonderful.
Okay, do you want to make the motion for them?
I certainly will. For the executive session on February tenth at six PM, I move to accept the minutes, excuse me, as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, unanimous.
For the regular open session meeting on February tenth at six thirty here at the distance learning lab, I approve, I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, unanimous, thank you. Budget update, Mr. Connolly?
Yes, so in your packet this evening, there is a budget update on the FY twenty budget, which essentially reflects expense and payroll activity through the month of February. I think, you know, through, at this point in the fiscal year, as we approach the final quarter of the year from April first forward, I think we continue to be in solid financial standing. Although we have dealt with some unanticipated, you know, costs in this year around the building maintenance and even kind of vehicle maintenance areas, we've been able to address those within the budget amounts and make some adjustments to, to address those surprises. The utility expenses are all forecasted to remain within budgeted ranges at this point, and we do anticipate that they'll have some available funds at the end of the year to reapportion in this area, which has been the case in the past, and we'll continue to monitor that over the last four months of the year. The food service program continues to perform strong, the end of the month of January with, with a net profit. I've yet to see the February numbers, but I'll be watching those. They continue to try to do things to promote interest in the program. They did run an event last month called the Student Choice Event at the high school, where the, the high school students got to kind of come in and try a couple of different options and then vote. And then that option that won on that, on that day does now appear as a part of the, the regular menu. So it was, got, got some excitement, there was some good, good participation.
So what one?
Ah, it was the barbecue chicken that won. Yeah, so that, it was, it was, it was a pulled pork, actually, I'm sorry, pulled.
The fact that you know that level of detail is amazing.
But it, it was fun, it was a fun event, and hopefully we'll do it one or two more times.
Bring some samples, because I haven't eaten yet.
I was gonna say, you know, I, when I'm working from home, I'm always wondering what I'm gonna do for lunch, I should just pop over to the cafeteria.
Yeah.
Never would have said, I never would have said that when I was in high school, that's for sure.
So everything, I mean, on the payroll side certainly remains within budgeted ranges. As we discussed in the past, there's a couple of areas in technology and central office support, where there's some positions that we're kind of re-looking at and so forth, or, you know, do not feel for a variety of reasons. And there's, there's some higher balances than typical at this point in the year. But, you know, I think we're, despite the unanticipated costs in the operational side and building maintenance area, I think we're, we're still in good shape as we approach the final quarter of the year. So, that being said, I'll just open up any questions.
Questions? So I have a few of them. So in terms of the food service, do you think the before-school starting a little bit earlier may increase breakfast at?
It's, it's a good point, so there were some questions that I asked, there were some food service questions that, that were in the survey that I did not include in your packet, but they were very interesting responses. The participation, particularly at the hood and the little school, hasn't been huge. It hasn't caught off to maybe the level that we have hoped. The bachelor program's doing very well, believe it or not. I'm happy to see that most of the reasons was more just personal preference. We like to have, you know, we have to have it at home with our students before we go, and it wasn't so much on the options or the price. There was, that was a very small percentage of the amount, the reason why they weren't participating in the program. I think there were actually, it was a, it was an amount of students, even though I think we did a pretty good job advertising it, there was folks that didn't even know it was available, believe it or not, and that, that was pulled in the survey, so.
Is it only, only available at before-school?
So right now, it is only available to the before-school program. I love to find ways to make, to change that. It gets tricky, you know, the principals aren't a huge fan of breakfast in the classroom.
I wonder why.
Yeah, so it's, it is, and the bachelor program has the highest percentage and is doing very well. And we're actually selling a lot of, more than just ala carte at the bachelor school. It's, it's more, they're doing mails and we're getting reimbursed many dollars in there. So we'll continue to look at it and see what we can do, and that it is a possibility that the earlier drop-off will, will develop more of a need for it. I'm very glad it's there, I'm very glad we're offering it.
Is the breakfast available to the early morning drop-offs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, it would make sense to, but.
In terms of, so have we, have we, in years past, I know we've had to freeze budgets early on in the year. Have we not had?
We have not done that.
Okay.
We have not frozen the budget, so I've communicated out to the budget leaders just this, this past week that, you know, that won't be necessary. As we typically do at this time of the year, I ask all budget leaders to start reviewing open encumbrances and POs and making adjustments as needed. And as we always do, April one and beyond, we're, we're kind of on a soft freeze, it's the final quarter, so everything kind of flows through the business office and we kind of have a conversation, but it's, we have not had to do that.
And then, and I, I know a challenge we had last year was getting enough substitutes, and so, and I don't know if this is really with the budget here, but when I was looking at somewhere, I saw the sub, overall, the teachers, but I mean, have we been able to find enough substitutes for?
Very good point. We've been struggling a little bit on that as of late. The, the fill rates have been between fifty and sixty percent, closer to fifty percent on average. We've re-advertized, we've recently got above four or five new subs that have come in on the re-advertising over the last several weeks, that we've got them signed up and in the system, and hopefully they, they continue to participate and look for jobs. As part of the FY twenty-one budget, we have, and we've discussed these proposals with the administrative team, and we've looked at what's going on across the, the state at increasing the sub-rate as well. If we think there's, there's probably going to be a recommendation to do that for FY twenty-one. Just looking at things like minimum wage going up and trying to just, even though we're not subject to that, we want to kind of watch those trends. So I think there's, it's necessary to do that. I don't think it will have a huge budgetary impact, but I think it's necessary to, to do that. We're not anywhere, we're not, we're not below, you know, we're maybe, we're about, we're about average, we're about eighty dollars. There are some districts in the area that might be a little higher, eighty-five, you know, some are, there's still some lower. We're, we're about at the norm, the median and the average, so I think we want to kind of stay ahead of that curve. And, you know, we're planning on making some adjustments there, or recommending adjustments to that there through the budget process.
Yeah, I mean, I would think you'd have to almost adjust it every year.
Yep.
If the, if the average, you gotta go with the market.
Right.
I'll add that there's a lot of schools that are really struggling to.
Yeah, it's not.
Right now.
North Reading.
Yeah, so.
It's, it's a statewide issue right now.
Yeah.
If Chris goes to law school, he was saying that he, he volunteers to sub whenever you need.
That's exactly what I said.
Oh wait, no, it's not.
No, I don't think I'm allowed to, but I, I don't think I could.
It would, no doubt require some hoops.
Okay. Any other discussion on the budget update, any questions?
First, let's raise them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No staffing? Kids and donations?
We have two here, I think, right? Mr. Chairman, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of five hundred dollars from China Cuisine to be used towards the performing arts program at the high school.
I second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of three hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents from the Bowlin Group fudruckers to be used towards the swim team at the high school.
I second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, unanimous. Nice to see the local community businesses supporting our schools too. Subcommittee updates, Substance Abuse Coalition met on February twenty-fifth, Dr. Daly will provide an update.
Thank you, the, it's quite a bit going on, the, look what Ms. Bailey continued to do, great work with that. There's a ongoing programs at, at different venues that are trying to discourage the sale of alcohol to minors, and there's a lot going on there. We talked about a few things that are sort of coming up in the news that are, that are quite disturbing, and we talked about some ways to try to spread that message to our students through our health programs, possibly some other programs that are, you know, increased use in, in crystal meth on, on the streets, which is, which is quite alarming. And I think, you know, we, you know, as the school's representative, Cynthia Conant's been there as well, which has been great. I think that, that trying to make a, a even larger connection back to our curriculum. So one thing we're going to do that's a little bit different, we're going to meet at the schools with that group to try to get some of our school personnel to attend a little bit more regularly, to try to make some more of those connections back to the classroom and, you know, the counseling side, the administrative side, and also the curriculum side with our health leaders as well. And so we, we have some upcoming meetings this week on, it's sort of the vape subcommittee of that group, and so that's another, you know, another information. There's just, you know, so much great work that's being done, but just so much more to do, you know, and it seems like there's always something that's one step ahead. You know, we come up with some great legislation that, that, that pulls some things back, and then the next thing you know, there's, there's something else out there, there's the next, the next drug, the next, the next vaping, you know, tool or instrument, and it's just, it's hard to keep ahead, but quite a bit was covered at that meeting, so very good.
Random comment last week, I was talking to a doctor in a presentation about, they were talking about how vaping is really impacting fertility of young women as well now. And so it's like really causing problems, and they used to have issues with nicotine, then it went away for a while, now all of a sudden, they're seeing a big increase with young women from vaping, so. Okay, athletics subcommittee?
I might have a typo on the, on the reps, I'm sorry.
Okay. Athletics subcommittee, who's on the athletics subcommittee?
I am, and.
So it's correct.
There was talk about redistributing the banners within the gymnasium to better show them. And I believe they were thinking about putting them across the soundboards, but there was a question of whether it would lessen the effect of the soundboard, and so I believe there was a couple of avenues that they were going to look into in regards to that. There was, oh, we received the check for, from the savings bank, and we've purchased two scoreboards, one for the baseball team, one for the softball team. And I believe at the end of this week, possibly next week, he was coming out to look at the installation.
He is, yeah, actually on Wednesday of this week, he'll be doing a site visit, and then we hope their, the work will actually start next week, we're hoping. Those will be, we're hoping they'll be up and ready by the start of the season, that's, that's, continues to be the goal. Scoreboards are here in our possession.
And there was some revamping of the hood school baseball campus, whatever you want to call it. And I believe they were purchasing a shed, the shed is on-site now, and they're looking to make the fencing larger and redo the, the bases and stuff. And that should be done by the end of March, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
For the spring season. We're possibly getting a shed for the tennis court area. And just a real brief discussion about the turkey farm. And then Marty let us know that on the turf field, we have about two years left on it. It's in relatively really good shape. And got a quote of under half a million to have it resurfaced, and it should last for fifteen years, so that's something in the future that we're going to have to be looking forward to.
That's a lot less than they were thinking, right?
Yeah, yeah.
How much was it the first time, like, million?
Seven fifty.
Right, and they, they feel like they can just lay right over this, and it's, it's a very, very positive report there. We, we also did discuss a little bit about eighth grade participation.
Didn't know how much you, I don't know about that, so that's.
So that's something that's, we're, we're going to continue to discuss in that group, so.
Eighth grade participation in sports?
Yes.
I was, and I was like a modified team or like a seventh and eighth grade team or?
It would be, it would be very selective, and we would come up with a process to, to introduce that idea, only for certain sports that really have, are having difficulty making a full run.
So right now, sports don't start till ninth grade?
Right.
Again, I have elementary school kids, I don't even know. Okay.
And that's it.
Fine arts subcommittee?
So, we had talked about a few things. The band uniforms are nearing the end of their, of their usefulness. There was a talk about ways that money can be appropriate, oh, that's the wrong word. Money can be put together to, to purchase new uniforms in the future. We talked about professional development that's been very useful for the faculty, for, for mass frameworks, for curriculum updates to, to the arts, and they feel that they've been getting great use out of that time. We kind of spun our wheels a little bit on looking into Venmo as a, as a way to, to, as a medium for taking in money during different events, but there are some hurdles unique to that that we'll be kind of going through in the future. And then there were some updates, requests coming for changes to stipends on a couple of new positions that they feel will, will really help in, in some of the upcoming performances that we have each year. That was kind of the major points.
Interesting, and the Venmo, that, for funds coming in, I imagine like we did a lot on the, on the policy about funds before. Make sure Michael's included if you.
Yeah, we've been in discussions. That's certainly going to need to involve the town treasurer, town accountant on, on those conversations. They kind of manage.
I mean, I have a personal Venmo account if they'd like to. Sure, they can just send it to, or checks made out.
An ease of use, but I think there are some concerns on the, on the town financial side that are, that are worth consideration as well.
You'd have to have a real, and I don't know how much you can, it's, it's even designed for that, that kind of institutional purpose. Does it have the controls necessary?
Right, yeah.
You've got to be a little skeptical, right?
Well, there, you know, there are clear benefits, but there are also some unique difficulties to, to sort out.
Thank you, and Rich, update on NORcam board of directors?
I'm afraid I did not attend that meeting. And I, and I, full disclosure, I also did not attend the fine arts subcommittee meeting, it was a bad, bad week.
Uh-oh. Only other comment here was I did get somebody that emailed me about school start times for an update on that, and I don't think there's been any meetings, but I think you were checking in. Is there any update on what's going on with the school start time committee?
Sure, I, I just, I updated the group and sort of where we were, and Rich has been a part of that group. We are continuing to look at it, we still are hoping to present something here in the late spring as sort of a feasibility. Quite honestly, part of what's, you know, with my transition and then also with multiple negotiations every afternoon, Michael and I just haven't had the time. So a, a lot of the work at this point is for us to look at some of the feasibility, and so that's something that we will do in the, in the next few months, and then have something to present here in the late spring, just as a, some ideas and some recommendations for us to consider, so.
Have you heard of any of the towns like even closer to where we are or?
I know that, and that's the other piece, that's one of the action steps that I'm going to take too, is to try to bring together some of the Cal superintendents to discuss this. I know Newbury Port did move forward and took some steps, and so that is something that I'm thinking about doing in the, in the next month or so. Something else that's under consideration is possibly arranging a speaker to come in for the community and the parents to talk about some of the benefits of, of sleep. Because that's what a lot of schools that have been successful with this, is sort of laying that educational foundation up front. So those are some of the steps we're going to take this spring, and then leading into some recommendations.
In a sort of related question, Michael, when do you think you would begin the process of negotiating a new bus contract next year?
So that would have, we would probably be sending out the bid in the December, January timeframe. And that, that bid would be come back in the January, early February, and then that would start that kind of negotiation.
Not sure that, that the, that the school start time process will be lined up with that, but it, it is related, or could be related, depending on what we decide to try.
Might make it easier for him because then he could get done with North Reading, run and go to another town.
Okay, subcommittee schedule, finance planning team is March fifth at eight fifteen AM in superintendent's conference room. Substance Abuse Coalition, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, nine thirty-eight AM at the superintendent's conference room. The NORcam Board of Directors, March twenty-sixth, seven PM, NORcam office. Athletic Subcommittee, April fifteenth, twelve thirty PM, superintendent's conference room. Fine Arts Subcommittee, April fifteenth at two thirty PM in the superintendent's conference room. And administrative report, Dr. Daly.
One thing I'll just note is with the Substance Abuse Coalition, we did move those meetings to nine thirty, and part of that is to accommodate. We're doing some increased visibility in, for the administrative team, and we've all agreed basically on, on a certain time on Tuesdays that we're going to all be in schools, Michael and I, Cynthia, we will not initiate any new business, new emails during that block, and everyone's expected to be in rooms, so that, the whole committee sort of made that adjustment for us so we can be part of that process. So we're excited about that as well. So just as an update for the North Reading Public Schools, we've met regularly with the town of North Reading and the health department and the town manager to remain proactive in assessing the needs of the town with respect to the novel coronavirus.
in assessing the needs of the town with respect to the novel coronavirus. I communicated with the school committee on February eleventh, twenty-twenty, to share a document that was prepared by the town hall, and we communicated again on February twenty-fourth, and it was information that came from, it was adapted from a letter from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, contained some basic information, and we were, you know, we're continuing to monitor the latest information from, from the Department of Health as well as the CDC, and we will provide, but, you know, part of the messaging is that, you know, the town really needs to have one spokesperson on this, and so, you know, I'm communicating for the schools, but the town, you know, everything we're done in cooperation, so we've had some meetings with the town, and they've been very proactive as well, so I think that, I think that we've been, I think we're a little bit ahead of the communication on the eleventh, and I think we're, you know, along with many other districts, kind of as it's, you know, just about any news channel this weekend was talking about it quite a bit, we're, we're very, you know, we're prepared for appropriate steps as needed, but right now, the, the main message is just basic hygiene, you know, hand washing, covering your mouth when you sneeze, staying home when you're sick, those items as well.
So, two quick questions, are there any trips that we've approved to any areas that are, that would be impacted potentially?
At this time, at this time, no, and we've checked, our plan and my recommendation is that we stay on course at this time, but we are, we are well aware and in constant communication, I mean, honestly, thinking about travel, Washington DC trip, I know I spoke with Principal O'Connell about that, you know, those, those trips are a little bit ways away, but there's nothing at this time in any of those areas that has a travel ban or anything like that in effect, but we are staying in constant communication with the EF provider or those other trip providers that are arranging.
And what is the April trip?
Yeah, the.
Where are they going?
The Ecuador.
Ecuador.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, in terms of, like, at my office, I know they put in Purell dispensers on every floor outside, every elevator, I don't know if we have any.
We do, we have those in all the buildings, and we have some additional ones now that were just added, you know, outside of the doors in the middle school as well. We've been in close, honestly, before, when this really first started to come out, Wayne reached out to me and told me the assurances he had from his providers of the equipment, but we've, we've ordered equipment, we have, we've, you know, we're very confident in our supplies, we're doing, you know, nothing really above and beyond that we always do at this time of year, honestly, but just making sure those, you know, door handles, railings, all those things are clean, but everyone's, everyone's aware that, you know, this is a little bit heightened right now, and we're just doing what we always do, but, you know, making sure that we do it really well.
And it's important, I think it's important to understand, for the community to understand that any, any, any sort of necessary, you know, larger action wouldn't come from us or from you, it would come from the state through the town.
Absolutely.
And so there, there's, you know, there would never be a decision that we would have to make that would, wouldn't be directed by the state, so I, I feel like the communications that you sent this week really touched on the right notes, which is the, the work, as you, as you say, that basically, you know, maybe doubling down a little bit on, on what you would do anytime this time of year, so.
And again, all those messages that I'm sending out, I'm sharing with the, the board of health from the town, the town manager, we're, we're all in this together, working as a team, so it's been, it's been very, very good and very cooperative. I just have something to share, just to pass around, this is just one packet, I didn't make these, but these are some sample posters that are part of our cybersecurity program that are being shared at the schools with the staff, we had all of our teachers, staff, custodians, paraprofessionals, everyone, administration, take part in the self-assessment, which they did, about a ten-to-fifteen minute, twenty-to-thirty questions or so on cybersecurity, and the next step now is that they are being assigned modules, so they're going through and doing these smaller modules on different pieces of cybersecurity, phishing scams and the like, and what's starting to come out now, I'm sort of the tester, I make sure that it works, so I've seen some of the, the test phishing emails that come out, and you're supposed to engage or not engage, and, you know, it was good, I got this email, I said, why am I getting this at my work email, these are, you know, I usually don't ever get, and then I said, oh, I wonder if that's, and then I clicked, and there it was, so, and it's great, when you click on it by mistake, a little orange screen comes up with a fish, and it says, you've, it says, oops, you've done this, you know, I think it's a great reminder, and if you react with it properly, it goes away and we don't know, and then we do get a report later on, on how many people interacted with it and what they did, and we can follow up with individuals, so.
So for those posters, what was this for?
So the posters are just part of the material, so these, these get shared with the teachers, these are things that we can put around the building, because, you know, and put around in teachers' rooms and areas like that, just to remind our staff about how to properly be safe and set secure passwords, and just to increase our cybersecurity, and these things do happen, I mean, I, I think, you know, even today, I think we got a legitimate one that came through, that, that, you know, if we misunderstood it, we might have been, you know, making a decision to, that that would not have been good for the district, so I think the more aware everyone is that this is out there, I think the better.
Yeah, I mean, there was a big one in the town where the ransom, ransomware.
Ransomware, exactly.
In town, and even if you read the police blotter, there's been people that have had, you know, I, I was, I was wondering, because if, if there was a student project, I was gonna say, it'd be nice to maybe even, like, include the community or something, have something that goes out, but if it's just, if it's not a student.
Sure.
Poster, then I don't think it relates.
Yeah, no, at this time, those are just the, it's really geared towards staff, and, you know, but I think absolutely for students, to educate them for the, this is like, it's similar to like financial literacy, this is just something, how to be smart and safe, and.
No.
You know, I think, and people, the feedback so far, so good, I haven't, I haven't formally surveyed, but just, you know, what I'm hearing from folks, they're saying like, you know, I never really understood why URL had that in there, or, you know, why, you know, why that password's better than that one, I mean, those are some of the tricky, like, they give you four passwords, which one's the most safe, or things like that, that you're realizing, oh, okay, that, that's why that's not as good as that one, and, so I think there's some good learning there. I've, I've mentioned to you folks before, last, in the last report about the ceremony on May eleventh, this is why we've moved our school committee meeting, I just thought I'd give you a copy of the letters, there's two-sided, one is to Principal Molly, one is to Principal Colleen, and that's just a copy of the letter from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, again, recognizing the bachelor school as a school of recognition, and the little school as the National Blue Ribbon School, and so this is for the ceremony this year that's being held in Worcester on May eleventh, so we are choosing our teams to attend. And then the last item that I have here is just a, an update from the NIASC Association of Schools and Colleges, and this is their special progress report on, on the NIASC process, and essentially, this letter just confirms that they have reviewed our, our information and that they are very happy with our progress so far. We are scheduled for our ten-year accreditation visit in, in calendar year 2025, and so I just want to take this moment to thank Mr. LePret and his team for all the great work they do on these progress reports and, and information, and it's, they've, they've approved our steps, and they think that we're certainly heading in the right direction, they take a moment to sort of recognize some of the things we've already done that they think are worthy of, of commendation, so.
Thank you very much. And any other correspondence, or? Okay, and future business, we have a meeting back here on March twenty-third at six thirty PM, and then on April first at three PM in the superintendent's conference room, we have the budget workshop. Any other comments, questions?
Day on the Hill, is anyone interested in going to learn a little bit more about?
What is that?
SOA, um, May fifth, I believe.
Yeah, I think that, then.
Yeah, I would love to have a, I don't know if I can do it, but I would, I would like to do it, just to.
It's good to go, like, every other year, every two, three years, yeah.
Oh, I think I have to be standing outside all day that day, it's town elections.
Yeah, May fifth, Tuesday, May fifth, yeah.
So.
We'll be back in time to vote.
If I will not be, you better be.
Well, I just wanted to put it out there, because I would like to go, and I didn't know. Sometimes we usually just kind of get together and take the train in and kind of save on that, or one person drives in type thing, so I just putting it out there, anyone would like to go?
Is that something that the superintendent's gone to in the past with you, or is that?
Um, yeah, I've gone with Kathy in the past, and I've also gone with John Bernard.
Did they send an email, or did they just send it in the mail?
I believe it was a postcard.
Yeah.
Um, I don't necessarily remember.
It was, there was a postcard that we received, and I received, I'm, I'm happy to go, I would enjoy that, so.
Okay.
Good.